Everyone's here? Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Spokane City Council Briefing for July 19th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Kinnear is absent.
All right, and we have Mr. Piccolo here today, leading the briefing, so take it away. Mike?
Good afternoon, Council. I believe there may be some amendments to the two agendas as we go through, but we'll take those up as we come upon them. And everyone can hear me all right? Better than last week? Excellent. Okay. Our first item on the consent agenda is a low bid for La Riviere, and Dan Bowler will brief this item.
Good afternoon. Item one is to propose low-bait contract for the Cochrane Basin Stormwater Conveyance Project through Downriver Golf Course with La Riviere of Raston, Idaho, for $1,264,676, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project is the first of two projects which pipe stormwater from the future pumping station at approximately TJ Menoc and Northwest Boulevard to the future treatment area just west of Downriver Golf Course, an area currently used as a disc golf area. The low bid from La Riviere was approximately $185,000, or about 13% under the industry's estimate. Three other bids were received. This project is funded with state loans and grants.
I do not see any questions, so thank you, Dan. Second item is acceptance of a grant award from the Office of Homeless Youth, and I have Matt Davis listed here. I don't see him on the screen.
I'm here.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, yeah, thank you. So this is a renewal of our award from the Office of Homeless Youth for the Young Adult Housing Program and Street Outreach Services. It's a flat funding, but it was non-competitively renewed. We are seeking to accept the award and approval to sub-grant a portion of the funds to extend our current sub-relationship agreements for an additional six months and conduct an RFP in the fall to select awardees for the remaining 18 months of the grant agreement.
A quick question for you, Matt. I'm just wondering, beyond that 18 months, do we have any indication from Commerce whether they're going to be likely to keep that funding going after that?
The funding for our award is, yeah, part of their ongoing budget. It is likely, though, that the city would have to competitively reapply for the funds at the end of this current two-year cycle we're moving into.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. I don't see any questions. Any further questions? Okay. Next item, number three, is a contract amendment extension with KPFF Consulting Engineer, and Nathan Anensen will brief this item.
Actually, it's Inga now briefing the item.
Thank you, Inga. I thought as much.
All right. Good afternoon. So this is an amendment to our existing contract with KPFF, who is doing the fish-like trail study for us. If you would like, I have a few slides showing you what the new alignment is that we want to look at, but basically, we need to expand the original scope of the study a little bit because we looked at four alignments and have not come to a good solution that is mutually agreeable to both the public and to the staff as to how easily we can construct it. And so we came up with a fifth alignment that we'd like to look at before committing to a route. So the reason for the amendment is to add to the budget and be able to study that fifth route and then move into the design phase after that.
Go ahead and show us those slides. That'd be helpful.
Okay. Let me just check the screen. So these were the original four routes that we looked at, and going through the study, we found that the red route was the preferred route from the consulting firm that was doing the work. When we presented it to the Parks Board, we said either the red or the blue was probably the most feasible, and that this was primarily based on constructability and cost. So then we went out and we did a survey with the public and asked them what their preference was between the red and the blue. And the response was that a high percentage of people really liked the blue alignment, but a lot of the comments in the survey showed that people really had strong opinions between the two of them. There was a lot of concern about safety on the blue route, which is the one that goes underneath High Bridge and goes through the trees and more of a, I guess, less populated, less-used part of the park. There was also a lot of concern about impact to the disc golf course with that one, and we have constructability concerns on the engineering side, just looking at the erodible soils that we have on the hillside there, and just permitting concerns trying to go underneath the bridges. So what we came up with is that really neither of those seemed to be a good solution, and so the next one that we want to look at is this orange route, which kind of goes in between the two. So this route goes down, it basically starts at the top entrance of the Dog Park, and would kind of skirt down the hillside on the east side of it. And a lot of that part of the park is used by the Parks Department for material storage, and so it should be something that would be a little easier to impact and relocate or shift some of that storage around and have less of an impact on the Dog Park and the trails, and less of an impact on the disc golf course. So that's why we'd like to look at it. Any further questions?
So Inga, Betsy here. So with the orange route, is how much less is the distance versus the red? I'm just looking at the squiggly lines.
You know, and the squiggly line has not been engineered yet, so it might get longer once we figure out exactly what the slopes need to be to get back and forth and up the hill. So I don't know yet.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, could you just elaborate a little bit more? You mentioned the comments kind of being part of why you're deciding to look at a fifth option. What are some of those comments that really are driving you to think that a fifth option's a better way to go?
So I tried to summarize them here, and we had a lot of people who responded to this. Many of the comments related to safety, and on the blue route in particular, solo women were concerned about being out there just because of there are some homeless encampments in the area, and just because it's a little bit more remote, just safety concern there. But then on the flip side, there was also safety concern from families about not wanting to ride on Government Way, which would be the red route. And so, you know, I heard that from both sides. A lot of comments about the disc golf and the Dog Park, and people not wanting those modified, or the Dog Park especially, the users don't want the trails. There's like a little trail system that goes up the hill and the trees. They don't want that to be impacted, which the red route would do. And then just Government Way being a busy, noisy street, a lot of people felt that it just didn't fit the overall nature of the fish-like trail, and it should be more of a natural setting.
So essentially, you had a lot of people chiming in saying they preferred one option, but they also commented that there were a lot of negatives to that one option?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Inga. You know, engineers are always creating solutions.
Thank you.
So thanks.
All right. Item number four is the acceptance of grant award through FEMA Homeland Security, and Julie Oberg will present this item.
Mike, I believe I'm covering that for Julie Oberg. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My screen's still on Inga's notes, so just want to make sure. This is a proposal that we accept, training dollars from Homeland Security for heavy equipment rigging, urban search and rescue training, collapsed rescue training, heavy vehicle and ropes, which oftentimes is unfortunately one of those items that we've deferred over the years due to our MOU by just not being able to pay for the overtime needed. This incoming money from Homeland Security allows us to do that. The total we'll be receiving is $82,994. Any questions?
I don't see any questions.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Number five is an MOU between the city and Spokane County, and Eric Olson will brief this matter.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. Can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Spokane Police Department is looking for an approval of an MOU between the city of Spokane and the Spokane County to apply for the Jagburn Memorial Grant. Our portion of that grant would be $97,010 that we would use for equipment. Any questions?
I don't see any questions. Thanks, Eric.
All right, thanks.
Number six is the placeholder for the Court of the Mayor on Pending Claims and Payroll. Number seven is the placeholder for the council meeting minutes, and that takes us to the legislative session. Under special budget ordinance, the first one involving fire grants and miscellaneous funds, and I believe Chief Schaefer, you're going to handle that one as well for Julie? It relates to the item you just briefed on.
Right. It's essentially just how we are able to institutionally accept the dollars from FEMA and Department of Homeland Security.
Correct.
Essentially, the breaking remains the same.
Then on the next, SBO 36084, on American Risky Plan Funds, Council President Beggs will brief on this one, and I believe there is a substitute ordinance for this one.
Yes, thanks. There's two issues. One, there's a substitute we'll all get into in a moment, and then secondly, we were thinking this was actually going to be on tonight's agenda, so there's a request to put it on tonight's agenda. But for the substitution, I sent an email out today explaining it, and Ms. Pfister sent out the copy of the ordinance as well. Originally, we were going to try to fill three positions with ARP funds, and we got some concern from the Finance Department, similar to some of the report we got at committee today, that we're still not clear on the guidelines of whether we can use ARP funds for these kinds of functions. And so what this does, instead of asking for $700,000, it asks for $100,000 from unappropriated reserves instead of from ARP, and that would allow council to hire two part-time employees to get started. One, to be gathering and managing potential proposals that we're getting from the public and run it through the council recommendation process and then over to the administration. And then the other one is an employee to help with public engagement that's dedicated to that. And so I'm looking for a motion to substitute the version that was most recently circulated, Ordinance 36084, from a $700,000 from ARP to $100,000 of general fund unappropriated reserves, and I did confirm with Chief Financial Officer Wallace today that the account codes are the correct codes.
Motion to substitute. Second.
Any discussion about the substitution? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
So one nay. Any abstentions? All right. So that passes five to one, substitute. And is there a motion, oh, to suspend the rules for purposes of adjusting our agenda today?
Second.
Any discussion about the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to move Ordinance 36084, which is a special budget ordinance, onto this evening's legislative agenda?
So moved.
Well, it's not.
The motion is to move the special budget ordinance of $100,000 for two staff people to assist in administration of the ARP funds from general fund unappropriated reserves to tonight's agenda from next week's agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
So there was one nay, so that passes, and that will be on tonight's agenda. Okay, Mr. Piccolo, back to you.
Okay. The next, SBO 35085, involves the parking fund to fill, to fund a new clerk position in parking services, and Chris Becker will brief this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is an SBO to create a new position in parking, and it will be funded by the fees paid for parking permits. And we're doing this in conjunction with the launch of our new software system, and we will be moving all permits to digital permits later on this year.
I don't see any questions. Oh, there is one.
Just a quick comment, Chris. Thank you so much for all your work. I know this has been a long, long road, and we appreciate your patience and all the thought that you've been putting into it, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chris. We have the next, SBO, also parking fund, and this is for a new parking enforcement specialist.
Absolutely. So this is creating a new parking enforcement specialist, one, that will be assigned to the neighborhood parking team that will respond to complaints outside of the meter boundary, and we are using salary savings from reclassifying the position earlier this year.
And I see no questions. So, Chris, the third one is also yours, next SBO. This is for planning services, SBO for consulting services for the Planning Director recruitment.
Yep. So this is, we are using the salary savings from our vacant planning director, and we have two vacant assistant planners as well, using that salary savings, converting it to contractual service funds. A portion of that will be used for the recruitment for the planning director, which has started. That position was posted two weeks ago, and the rest will be used on moving the planning department work plan forward. And I think Louis, when he briefed this last week, mentioned some of those projects that we would anticipate using contractual services for.
I have a quick question.
Councilmember Mum.
Hi, Chris. Is this through which date? I mean, I'm assuming we'll hire a planning director this year, and then those assistant planners. Where do we stop collecting those files to put toward this?
I think we anticipated using six months of the director's salary and anticipated hiring planners later in the fall. I would have to, I can confirm with the accountants, the exact number of months we used.
Right, because we need those planners no matter what, also those associate planners. So, yeah, if you could tell us what date the cutoff was on that, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
We can.
I don't see any further questions, so thank you, Chris, for all three of those. Now we have our emergency ordinance, 36082, and Councilmember Kinnear was going to brief this item.
And she is gone, so I'll take that over. So you might remember that we had one ordinance on cooling centers and homeless shelter beds, all in the same chapter, but we divided it into two last week and did the emergency inclement weather centers as one and filed a new ordinance to cover the other portions of the original ordinance. And essentially, there's two things. One, it requires city staff to provide to council and the public the estimates of how many homeless people are sheltered in facilities and how many homeless people are unsheltered. So currently, we haven't gotten the unsheltered numbers in quite a while, though my understanding from Mr. Alexander was that those are collected and analyzed quarterly from HMIS data. So that would require that, so we'll know what that data is. And then secondly, it tightens up the language on closing shelter beds without having a substitute, and this arose out of the closure of the Way Out Shelter in June without replacing it with equivalent 24/7 low-barrier coed beds. And I heard from Volunteers of America at Hope House, even though they have this big new facility now, that shortly after the Way Out Shelter was closed, they're turning away 20 women an evening. And I think if we had replaced those beds, that wouldn't be happening. So that's what that is coming up next week.
Okay. That takes us to our resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first resolution, 2021-0062, involves the city of Spokane's housing action plan as a guide for future housing planning. And it's my understanding that Maureen Murphy is planning to present this next Monday, so she is not presenting today.
That is true. She's on vacation, and since the public really wants to hear that, probably, Maureen's going to do that next week.
Okay. Next, our resolution, 0063, involves a declaration, declaring Rebound as a sole source for contract with the Fire Department, and Chief Schaefer will brief this item.
We discussed this, I think, in public safety, just briefly, but the office of this program is used at a number, oh, cat in the frame, cat in the frame. I just saw something across my screen. I wasn't sure what it was. The officer, the idea behind Rebound is it is a sport-minded company that recognizes firefighters as the athletes that they are. And what they do is they come into a community and work with an established network that understands the job of a firefighter and the requirements physically for getting that person back to work, and then works aggressively with those practitioners and with the people in the community to get them to work quicker. Our compables that have contracts with Rebound across the state, Tacoma, Central Pierce, Puget Fire Authority, and a number of others are realizing pretty significant savings from the cost of backfill. Mainly getting these people back to work quicker in a stronger method improves their overall health and their ability to perform when they need to. And we are looking for alternative and innovative ways in the department to reduce our overtime cost, and that cost is really directed at, we have to fill seats. We don't have the luxury of not filling a spot on a fire truck because a spot on the fire truck when somebody's absent would close down the firehouse if that were the case. So those overtime dollars, the 24 hours at a time, become really, really expensive. The estimations that we have on this program will get our return on our investment in the first 12 months. So we're really looking forward at the opportunity to pilot this for two years and then report in public safety as the program gets rolled out, as people are involved, and make certain that it is a worthy investment before we really jump in with full feet. Any questions?
I don't see any questions, so thank you. Thank you, Brian. Resolution 2021-64, the request for Spokane County Auditor to hold a special election on November 2, 2021, for the initiative measure, and Terry Pfister will brief this item.
Yes, the hearing on the validated initiative petitions will be held tonight, and the next step in the process, oh, I'm sorry. The hearing on the validated initiative petitions will occur tonight, and the next step in the process is for the council to consider a resolution to add the initiative, to request the county auditor's office to add the initiative to the, excuse me, county elections office, sorry, to the ballot for November 2. Any questions?
Just confirming that we don't, it's really ministerial for us at this point, how the signatures are validated as far as passing it on.
Correct. Correct. And if the council wished, they could suspend the rules and add this resolution to tonight, or we could leave it on the 26th. Either way works. The filing date for the resolution is August 3, so there is still time if it remains on the July 26 agenda.
Thank you, Terry. The next item is Ordinance 36080, which will be considered under hearing item H1A. So then I believe there is an ordinance to be added to your agenda, Ordinance 35824, regarding vacating portion of Up River Drive between Mission Avenue and East North Central Street.
Yeah, and I'll brief that. So this is next to Vista Headquarters. It's where they're going to install that new park, and they've satisfied all the conditions for the vacation, and if we get this passed right away, they'll be able to construct it this year. Otherwise, it'll get put off a year. So they requested that we fast-track this. Again, we already approved this generally earlier, subject to conditions, so the conditions have been met. So it would take a motion, we've already suspended the rules, but it would take a motion to add to tonight's legislative agenda, Ordinance C35824.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adding to tonight's agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. It's added to our agenda this evening.
Okay. Now, under first reading ordinances, first one is Ordinance 36088, regarding the adoption of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, and Lance Dahl from the Fire Department will brief this item. I don't think we can hear Lance.
Lance, you're on mute.
Clear now? Okay. This was briefed, sorry for the mute. You'd think after a year, we'd get used to that, right? The adoption of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code, most of the code is already adopted by the state, almost 99% of the code. What we're looking at here in the city of Spokane is to include a couple sections, one on water. on water and one on fire department access, so water supply and fire department access. And then also adopt certain appendices. Appendix A is the general requirements, B is vegetation management, C is fire hazard severity forms, so evaluation of property, and D is a fire danger rating system. It uses the National Fire Danger Rating System when you grade that property. So it takes that objectivity out of looking at these properties and coming up with a solution for the owners. Questions?
No, I don't see any questions. So Lance, you have the next one, 36089, relating to various fire code amendments, including fees.
Yes, thank you. We have not done a fee study at the fire department since 2008, implemented in 2009. So we're behind the average state fire department permit fees. So think of our operating permit fees, those things that are code required or required in the fire department code that we issue an operating permit for. So this would raise the fees to within $10 of the state average. Our sister city is Tacoma. Their base permit fee right now is $280. It would be about 75% of Tacoma's average rate right now. We would roll these fees over into hiring new FTE so we could complete inspections based on the NFPA standard 1730, the national standard. There's about five, almost 6,000 buildings we aren't inspecting on a one-year, two-year, or three-year cycle, so we really need these FTE to do that. In 2004, when we were at critical budget here in the city, we lost 30% of our inspection staff. So this would get those 30% back and increase us two more people. And then there were a couple other positions there, community risk reduction, technical specialist, a clerk replacement for one we lost, and fire protection engineer in training, succession planning down the road for our FTE. He retires and to help take on some of that extra load that we work hand-in-hand with at Development Services Center.
Okay. I don't see any questions, so thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
The hearing item H1A is the final reading ordinance for 36080, amending the Spokane Cop Plan, and Nathan Gwynne will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo. Good afternoon, councilmembers. This is Nathan Gwynne with the City of Spokane Planning Department. Ordinance C36080, adopting the Spokane Downtown Plan, is on the agenda for a public hearing at your meeting next week on July 26, as well as for first reading tonight. And you received a presentation on this ordinance that you're briefing this week, and expect to give you a similar short presentation tonight for the first reading, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. And that completes the task agenda for July 26, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve that agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, the agenda for next week is approved. And I know we have a couple changes, we have a couple changes for tonight's agenda. I guess the first one I see is under ordinances, special budget ordinances, 36081, which was providing some funding to the cops for victim advocates. We were looking to substitute an ordinance, instead of it coming out of ARP funding at this point, administration has proposed that it come out of the public safety levy. And so there's been an ordinance filed that will do that. It's a little deceptive in the sense that it's only $56,250 for this year, but as we'll talk about in a moment on amending the contract, it'll make up the full amount of money that we were looking for in the next two years. So is there a motion to substitute the latest version of 36081 for $56,250, a special budget ordinance coming out of the public safety levy?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Councilmember Mum had her hand up before you called for the question, so.
All right. Sorry about that.
I just assumed that we got our question answered, that we didn't have to meet some number, you know, to go out to RFP. Did we get that question answered? For sole source.
Yep. I don't know if it's, I don't, we'll have to check on that. I don't think so, because it's not, it's just amending a contract, so, but we'll check.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And were there any abstentions? No. Okay, so that substituted, and now I'm, oh, I think the contract's going to be a special consideration as well, right? Okay, great. So the second thing related is, and Terry Fister sent this to us, was a special consideration for OPR 2020-0306, which is the original cops contract, amending it. And so the requested motion is to put it on our legislative agenda tonight as a special Is there a motion for that? Councilmember Kefkar.
Yeah, could you just clarify?
Your break.
On the agenda to be amended, is that right?
You're breaking up just a little bit, so, oh, no, we're breaking up.
You requested clarity.
We're breaking up.
No.
Can you ask that question again?
Yeah, just wondering, so contract on our agenda amended, is that?
Give me thumbs up if you can hear us right now. Can you hear us? Okay. All right. Let me try to answer that, but it broke up a little bit, so if I don't, please re-ask it. So what's on the agenda as a special consideration would be an amendment to the existing contract between the city and cops to add in additional victim services going forward in the amount of $270,000 over a three-year period. When I say three years, I mean three calendar years. It's half of this year, all of next year, and the first half of 2023. So that was sent out by Ms. Fister a little bit earlier today, so that's what would be, we would be voting on at the special consideration. And that's what makes the $270,000 binding on the city, even though we're only making a special budget ordinance for $56,000 for 2021. But it's still going to be subject to Councilmember Mum's question, probably, but go ahead, Councilmember Mum.
That was it. I'm happy to support it, as long as we're just following the rules.
Yep. We'll look into that between now and the 6 o'clock meeting and get some clarity on Any other questions about putting this on the agenda as a special consideration? All right. Is there a motion? I don't think I got a motion already on that, did I? Is there a motion?
You moved and seconded when you were voting.
Oh, we did. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. I lost my way. All right, all those in favor of putting it on our legislative agenda as a special consideration indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, and we'll look, we'll figure that out. All right, I believe that is all the agenda changes, and that brings us to the consent agenda, Ms. Fister.
Consent agenda, reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, easement for city sewer pipe, which crosses Fairchild Air Force Base property from September 1, 2020 through August 30, 2045. Number two, contract extension with parking consultant Dixon Resources Unlimited, San Diego, California, for continued support implementing key strategies within the 2019 downtown parking study for parking services, $107,400. Number three, contract amendment number one with HDR Engineering for the wastewater collection SCADA project, $197,903.94. Number four, contract renewal number one with Olin Corporation doing business as Olin Chloroalkali Products and Vinyls, Tracy, California, to supply liquid sodium hyperchloride to Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility, $305,200 plus tax. Number five, acceptance of the fiscal year 2020 continuum of care program grant award and agreement, as well as permission to enter into sub-recipient contracts beginning August 1, 2021, $4,148,698 revenue. Number six, CHHS is requesting permission to amend and extend agreements with A, the Safe Shelter Program funded with Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Funds, $581,096; B, the Women's Health Drop-In Day Center Program funded with Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus, $105,415; C, the House of Charity Program Agreement funded with Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Funds, $581,096; D, the Hope House Program Agreement funded with Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Funds, $266,166. Number seven, authorization to accept funding from Washington Association of Police Sheriffs and Chiefs to be used towards the investigation of unresolved sexual assault cases and bringing them to a meaningful conclusion, $208,000 revenue, relates to special budget ordinance C36079, which be considered during the 6:00 p.m. legislative session. Number eight, contract renewal with ESO Solutions Incorporated for annual subscription fees for the incident record management system, $81,827.99, including tax. Number nine, report of the mayor of Penning A, claims and payments approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through July 9, 2021. Total $4,641,497.49 with Parks and Library claims approved with respect to boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $3,591,247.21. B, payroll claims approved obligations through June 26, 2021, $7,938,771.89. Number 10, city council meeting minutes for July 15, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Fister. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as read, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is approved, and we will see you all back here at 6:00 p.m. for our regular legislative session. We're adjourned.